Thank you, Production, Mary Saminiego. If you could put the camera on me, please. That, for this meeting, the very first order of business is to elect a chairman and a vice chair. It votes, we take motions from the floor. The only ineligible members are the mayor and Alderman Berry because they are elected officials, it has to become, from the appointed officials. So someone would make a motion to appoint a chair first.
I move, I mean, I appoint, nominate, rather, Greg Sandlin.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
One nay? Okay. It carries. So Sandlin has been named chair. Do I have a motion for a vice chair?
I'll nominate Paul Schwer.
Is there a second for Schwer as a vice chair?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed? Okay, motion carries, so Schwer is the vice chair. Okay, congratulations, Mr. Sandlin. You can proceed with the meeting.
Do we need to move or anything? Should we just start where we are?
Just go to number two, determination of a quorum?
Okay, well, first, I just want a quick comment, just thank you for this opportunity, and this is important work that we do. And I look forward to being chairman and working with everybody to advance our planning codes and all that we need to get done. Okay, we do have a quorum tonight, so we are good to go, all present, which is always a good plan. A pledge of allegiance, can I ask Paul Schwer to lead us in the pledge?
Sure. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, your, our minutes from the October 18th meeting are in the, in the agenda here, so please take a minute to look at those if you haven't already.
Move to approve the minutes.
First, move to approve by Mayor Noas, second by Alderman Berry. All in favor?
I have a, I have a comment on the minutes. The, let me find them. Mrs. Patrice Porter came and talked, and in the comments just basically say concern with, concern with other commercial properties and noise control during late hours. Her specific concern was that she, that her business may be subjected to future regulations that would affect her business, I think that the minutes should reflect that.
Which item is that?
It's B, Patricia Porter is one.
Future regulations, how did you put that?
That, that her concern was is that, that future regulations on noise due to that new development would, would negatively affect her business.
Okay, I will get that straightened.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the minutes from October 18th? Can I get a motion?
I'll move to approve with the, with that.
Okay, with that, move to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Minutes from October 18th are approved. Okay, reports from officers and staff.
Thank you, Mary Saminiego, City Planner. Number one, I just want to thank Chad Grimes, who I said earlier has resigned from the Planning Commission, I just want to thank him for his service to the Planning Commission, to Telahoma as a whole, and me personally, I've been here just under a year, it'll be my anniversary November 30th, and he was very welcoming and friendly when I first got here, so I want to thank him for that. Also, I would like to introduce Andy Hall, who is the new Planning Commission member. If Andy, if you could just take a brief, two minutes to introduce yourself and tell everybody back home a little bit about yourself.
Andy Hall, been here in Teloma for 35 years now, been here all my life, don't plan on leaving anytime soon. Excited to join the board, or well, the Planning Commission, and look forward to everything that comes up for the Teloma 2040 Plan.
And that's all I have, Mr. Sandlin, thank you, that's all I have.
All right. Old business, I guess there's no, no old business, we'll move to new business. We have a public hearing for subdivision plats, the first one is the lake, the lakes at Ledford Mill. I'm sorry, these first three, these first three are just moving to continuance?
Yes, I'll read it for the record if you, if you'd like. Item number one, the lakes at Ledford Mill, major subdivision preliminary plat, that application is not prepared to move forward, so the applicant has requested a continuance to the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting on December 20th. Item number two, Stillwater, major subdivision preliminary plat, again, this application is not prepared to move forward at the time, so the applicant has requested a continuance to the regularly scheduled December 20th, 2021, public hearing. The item number three, Kalo Minor Subdivision, request to continuance by the applicant to the December 20th, 2021 hearing, that application has been held up because they are still pending their required septic system signatures on the plat. And then, just to clear the agenda, sir, item number five, Whitley Minor Subdivision, I was notified this afternoon that they are going to request a continuance to the regularly scheduled December 20th meeting because they, as well, are rating, waiting on septic approvals. So we will hear items four, six, seven, and eight tonight.
Okay, well, let's move on to item four, the Cotton Sliwa Minor Subdivision. Applicants are Michael and Katina Sliwa, I apologize for your, for your last name.
It's not mine, I'm just here for them.
Okay. Yeah, well, you go, I-
Do we hear from the applicant first?
Yeah, we hear from you first. Forgive me, I'm not, my Robert's rules is pretty rusty, so give me a, give me a few months maybe to catch up. Please continue.
Okay, I got notified by these applicants, they wanted to build a guest house, and they had already been, I think, in Manchester, and met with the Coast Department over there and already had a survey done, and, and I got looking at it and noticed it was RS1, so I contacted Mary, and Mary's like, oh, no, we need to do this, 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 and this. So we've been messing with it for, I guess, what, about two months now, getting everything approved that everybody needed, and went through a couple of Planning Commission hearings at the Wilson Community Center, and I think we've got everything pretty much on there that everybody asked for, and just ready to move forward.
Can I get his name for the record, please?
Get your name for the record, please?
Oh, it's Terry Manley.
Terry, man. Do we need an address also?
Please.
And an address?
201 Chriswood Drive, Telahoma.
Okay, well, the staff, Mary's prepared, the staff has prepared a report for this, and I know, I see no, they recommend approval, subject to all staff comments. Are there any questions or comments on this?
You have a public, you have a public hearing.
We need to go to the public, see if there's any public comments, please?
Sorry about that, good job.
See if there's any members from the public that'd like to comment on this application?
Any members from the public who would like to comment on, on this potential development? Seeing none?
Okay, now I'm prepared to give my, a brief staff presentation.
A brief staff presentation.
Thank you, again, this is the Cotton Sliwa Minor Subdivision. Property is located at 1420 Short Springs Road, just outside of the city of Telahoma's limits, but it is in the Coffey County Urban Growth Boundary. Here is the plat, the applicant is requesting to create one lot. The existing property is almost 20 acres, is 19.5 acres, so they're wanting to retain the existing house on 16.25, and then create a second lot to the rear of the existing house on 3.25 acres. It meets all standards of the RS1 zoning district within Coffey County, it has been reviewed by the Coffey County Planner, it meets all subdivision regulations with the exception of the distance for a flag lot and then associated distance from a fire hydrant. You'll see on page seven of your staff report, findings of fact for the granting of the variance, typically flag lots, the distance of the flag is 250 feet, this flag distance is, I believe, a little over, one moment, let me find it.
1100.
I think it's 1100 feet, as well as typically, any new lot has to be 600 feet from a fire hydrant, the closest fire hydrant to this property is over 1600ths linear feet. So they need a variance from that applicant, those two provisions. Again, this is not in the city limit, it is in the county. The applicants are aware of the limitations of the lack of fire hydrants within close proximity of their proposed building. Staff did work extensively with the applicant and the property owners to try to find another location for the house that would be closer to code, but ultimately, this is the proposal that the applicants wanted to pursue for their property. They really wanted to have the new house in the rear, in more of a rural setting from the existing house. So ultimately, this is the proposal they wanted to bring forward, they were of the concerns with the proximity to the fire hydrants, like I said, and they're willing and would be required to do whatever necessary fire prevention for the structure itself once it comes to permitting. So saying that, staff did recommend approval to the final plat, subject to staff comments, and based on the findings of fact for the variance to section 4-3.2, which is that flag lot distance. Do you have any questions for me?
So we agreed to put in a fire sprinkler system to meet that recommendation?
Within the house itself?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions from the commission on, on this?
Move to approve with the inclusion of staff comments.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Yes, sir.
This is more of a, every situation is completely different, right? But I know that there's been a couple of different issues people have had with flag lots, and so the only concern that I would have is approving this variance. How much does that open up the door for us to have to approve variances and not look?
To be, okay, I understand what you're saying, you're saying, will this open the city up for an argument for precedent? A variance in and of itself is saying that there's a unique peculiarity for this specific lot that warrants release from the code, so therefore, there is no establishment of a precedent because we're saying, it's something unique about this property, so if somebody else were saying, I want the same variance, they have a different piece of property with their own very specific criteria, with their own very specific conditions.
That condition is just-
So saying for this one situation, the variance is appropriate.
It's just kind of objective, subjective, sorry.
No, there's set criteria, but it's, again, secondary based on this one specific piece of property.
My real comment is, is, is why such an odd lot lines? Like, it's like an island in there, surrounded by its own lot, is there not a, is there, is there no standard to try to minimize perimeter of lots and stuff like that?
We have no provision for that in, in the code. I mean, typically, one likes to have linearly shaped lots, but again, as I stated, for the record, the applicants wanted the, this property to be in the rear of the existing house, kind of in a woodland setting, and then part of the shape and the location of the property is reliant on where the septic field was.
Okay, so it's septic field driven, then that's, it's, okay, nevermind, thank you. Do we need to vote again?
No, you don't have to vote again.
No, this one passed 7-0, so, good luck with your development.
Yep.
Thank you very much. You all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Okay, item, item six is Roger, I'm sorry, Alfred Rogers Minor Subdivision, and this, this is a public hearing, so if we could hear from, from Mr. Rogers.
I'm Spencer Parton with Johnson and Associates Land Surveying, I'm here representing Mr. Rogers.
Okay.
We're just requesting a minor division so that he can cut off 2.4 acres off of 15, 15 acres, 15.84 acres.
Okay, and any comments from anyone present on this, on this proposal? I see none. Oh, I'm sorry, staff report, thank you.
Thank you. Again, Whitley Minor Subdivision, nope, I'm sorry, they continued, Alfred Rogers Minor Subdivision, this property is located on 2212 Harton Boulevard, it is in the Urban Growth Boundary, but in this case, for Franklin County, in the Agricultural Zoning District of the large existing piece, they are wanting to create a lot with 2.84 acres and the existing house towards the front being kind of the northwest section of the lot in this general location. It has been reviewed by the Winchester/Franklin County Planner, and she has stated that it meets all the zoning requirements, and it also meets all the zoning subdivision requirements of the Telahoma subdivision regulations. Again, they're just creating a lot, but the remainder to be undeveloped and developed at some future date. So saying that, staff recommends approval, subject to all staff comments. This concludes my presentation, sir.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I have discussion.
Discussion?
Yes.
No.
Stop you this time. Mary, my, my comment is that we're kind of making a, basically a landlocked lot there onto the, I guess, southwest of this property, and there's a 50-foot easement here that I believe is to access that lot, is that correct?
Yes, it is correct, sir.
It looks like from this, from this sketch here, that this, with that, if they ever do decide to develop that, that large building in there, and they do put a, they have put a roadway in there, that the current structure here is not going to meet the setbacks. Is, is that an issue?
No, that's not an issue at the time, it would meet, the roadway itself would not be within the, I mean, it's a 50-foot right-of-way, and then the roadway would be within it, but, I mean, it would just become an existing condition on that side of the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yeah, I, I'm, this, I'm curious, this, this lot one, this acreage, I, I mean, it's just like, can I get a sense of what you might plan to put in there?
For lot one?
Yeah.
That is the 2.84 acres for, or 2.48 acres for the house?
Okay, that's, that's where the house would go?
That's where the house is.
That's where the house is.
There's an existing house there. We're separating it from the remainder of the 15 acres. The remaining acreage is going to be added to a separate piece of property fronting Spring Creek Road.
Okay. Okay. We've had a motion and a second, so I guess, any other comments from, from the commission? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, good luck with your-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to number seven, public hearing for Roger and Karen Hill Minor Subdivision. Is someone here representing the Hills? Please state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Steve Caffey with Caffey Surveying, I'm Shelbyville, Tennessee, I'm here representing Mr. and Ms. Hill, as well as Mr. Baker.
Okay.
And, you know, nutshell, Mr. Baker has requested that, he's going to try to purchase the back portion of the Hill property for his own usage at a later date, which is the point, which is .97 acres. The Hill are his daughter and son-in-law.
Okay.
His plan is to eventually, to take that little, that little section there, it's got a, he provided an easement onto Lorraine Avenue, which is a private road that he owns. He's provided a little easement onto Lorraine Avenue, and at a later date, he wants to convey off a little bit more of his property to make that an actual full-size lot that will front totally on the right.
Hmm, okay. Thank you, thank you. Any, anyone from the, any questions for, for the applicant? Anyone in the audience that want to speak to this project? None? Staff, comments, please?
Thank you. This is the Hill Subdivision, here is the location of the existing property, it is located at 410 Inglewood Drive, as the applicant stated, they're wanting to cut the property in half, front to back. The existing house will be on the front lot on Inglewood Drive, and then the back lot will face Lorraine Drive, which, again, as the applicant stated, is a private road. Each of the lots meet all of the minimum standards of the existing R1 zoning district, as well as the criteria of the subdivision regulations. Saying that, staff recommends approval of the final plat, subject to staff comments. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve this one?
Motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Berry, second.
Second.
And Mayor Noas, thank you. Any questions, any comments on, on this proposal?
Thank you, I'll just stay up here.
I, I do have one, I mean, Lorraine is a private drive, so is there any issues we have if they want to access that drive? Is that something that's been resolved privately and nothing the city needs to worry about?
It's not, okay, so, Lorraine Drive, when this, this larger subdivision, the subdivision was developed, Lane Drive was constructed to city road standards, however, the maintenance is privately maintained, so it's just like a city road, but the city doesn't maintain it, the Bakers do. So the code says that you can have frontage and access a public road or a private road, so in this instance, this block back lot will be accessing this private road. Similarly, to the next case we will be hearing.
All right, if there's no other questions or comments, may I get a vote to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve, thank you very much for your time, good luck on the project.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, we are down to one more, well, maybe not. Another public hearing for Bobby and Mary Baker, Minor Subdivision. We'll start the public hearing, first comments from the applicant.
Again, my name is Steve Caffey with Caffey Surveying, representing Mr. Baker. In this situation, he is conveying off two acres there off the end of Lorraine Drive, or Lorraine Avenue, to another daughter and son-in-law.
And staff report on this?
Is there any public comment?
No, is there any public comment from, from those present? Seeing none, staff comments, please?
Thank you. This is the Bobby and Mary Baker Minor Subdivision, this property is generally located at 300 Inglewood Circle. As the applicant stated, they are wanting to subdivide off two acres from the larger individual property to the north. It is accessing a privately maintained 50-foot right-of-way road, sewer and water has been reviewed by TUA, it meets all of the subdivision zoning regulations of the R1 zoning district, as well as all the regulations of the subdivision regulations without a variance, so saying that, staff recommends approval of the final plat, subject to all staff comments. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve this-
Subject to all staff comments.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, thank you. Any questions from the commission on this one? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, this one's approved, again, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, now we're going into a public hearing, subdivision regulations amendment, revisions to the subdivision's regulations regarding vested rights and the vested right, vested Rights Act of 2014. Staff, I'm sure staffs has, has some comments on this one?
Yes, thank you, I'm going to my presentation, please. So, in 2014, Tennessee House Bill was passed called the Vested Rights Property, the Vested Property Rights Act of 2014. This act changed Tennessee Statute Section 13-3413 with regard to vesting provisions for subdivisions. Vesting provisions are how long after a phase of a subdivision, either preliminary plat, construction plans, or final plat, remain in effect before one has to act on that application? Meaning, in layman's terms, if I get a subdivision, if I apply to get a subdivision approved today, much like some of these applicants do, I have a vested right to be held to today's standards, but I must develop the property within a, to start developing the property within a set timeframe, or I lose my vesting. So this is one to protect developers and property owners from saying, if you got a subdivision approved today, but we change the code in three months, saying sidewalks are required in all streets, he does not, we can't retroactively now say that's a requirement for him. At the same time, it protects the local government from having projects lag on for decades. So there could be an instance where somebody got a subdivision approval today, but if they wait 20 years to develop, the code could have significantly changed in that point, and we would not be able to capture those new regulations. So, in 2014, a group of developers worked with the legislation, and they approved the Vested Rights Legislative Act, which again, is part of Tennessee statute, so we cannot amend or revise these provisions. Unfortunately, when your subdivision regulations were completely redone in 2018, these provisions were not captured in that rewrite. So, MTS reviewed the subdivision regulations and found that this part had not been adopted. So this is the procedure for adopting this now, again, as I stated briefly, it lays out provisions for preliminary plat approval. As an example, once the Planning Commission approves a preliminary plat, the developer has three years from the exact date of that approval to obtain either final approval or secure permits, or commence some site preparation through the construction plans, and so on. So because of that, staff is going to recommending approval, based on the language submitted in your staff report on page 49. Because these are subdivision regulations, you solely are in charge of amendments to subdivision regulations, it does not go before the Board of Mayor and Alderman. So it's one public hearing by the Planning Commission.
Okay, this is a public hearing?
Yes, it is.
So thank you for your presentation, a public hearing, are there any comments from the public? Seeing none? I guess I, I need a motion to, I need a motion to approve this change.
Move to approve.
Move by Mr. Comer, second by Mr. Alderman Berry. Discussion?
My, my only real comment is, is that what happens to the, if, do we have any subdivision preliminary plats out there that are four years old, that, are those grandfathered still, or will it still be lingering, or, or will, or does this apply to them as well?
This would apply for any subdivisions approved as of this date.
Okay, so that there's still, it doesn't do anything to clean up them, them, anything of the past, okay?
No. No, I can say I'm not aware of any subdivisions that have not, that we have that have not been acted on at this point.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Have we not been abiding by that rule in the past? My memory says we have applied that rule in the recent past.
I, not that I'm aware of. Since I've been here, I mean, the existing, as an example, under final plat in the existing code, which will be repealed, it says, no vested rights accrued to any final plats by reason of preliminary final plat approval until actual signing by the Secretary of the Planning Commission and recording. And then it's got a vesting procedure for construction plans within 18 months of preliminary plat approval, whereas in the state statute, you have three years. So there were some vesting procedures, but they were out of compliance with Tennessee statutes.
Okay, we have been applying the, the 18 months, is that correct?
Yes, that's out of compliance with Tennessee statutes.
All right, I, I guess I'm not remembering the time correctly, but I, I'm pretty sure we have applied that rule in, in the recent past.
Yes. We had different provisions, but again, we have to comply with the statutes.
So the new, the new statute is more lenient than what we, we used to have, so it's, it's good. Well, if there's no more questions or comments on this proposed change, all, all in favor, call for vote, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, that does our agenda. Our next meeting will be Monday, December 20th, right before Christmas. And with that, I'm sorry.
Yes, we're going to adjourn the planning commission, we've got a board of zoning appeals case.
We were going to adjourn the planning commission meeting, and we will open up a BZA meeting. Okay, I don't have an agenda for that, so.
It's in your packet, it starts on page 50.
Okay, it's in the very back. Okay, thank you. Call to order. All present, we have a quorum. Summary of our Board of Zoning Appeals agenda items. Help me out, Mary, what, what are we doing?
The next thing, please, we go to the minutes.
Okay, just, everybody take a look at the minutes from our last meeting, October 18th.
I'll second.
All in favor of the minutes from October 18th, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And no one, I see no one finished business. Moving on to new business with public hearings. Appeal, this is, okay, let's, let's go and get staff comments on this, if you will. What, what are we looking at here?
Okay, thank you, Mary Semeniego, for the record. This is appeal to this senior planner decision for non-conforming use. It's appeal case 2021 dash one. There is a single-family house located at 309 East Deckard Street. The property is currently zoned at general commercial C2. Single-family houses are not a permitted use in the C2 zoning district. The existing house experienced a fire in 2016. They applied for building permits, but those permits expired. So as of 2016, the house had a fire in it. The single-family house was purchased in 2020 by the applicant. At that time, the applicant was told that the property was zoned C2. Because of the purchase of the property, the applicant has been allowed to obtain building permits in anticipation of occupying the house as a single-family residence. So the property, the house is currently a non-conforming single-family residence in the C2 zoning district. The property had a carport on it, as well as a detached shed. The applicant removed both of those structures. She now wants to put a new storage back, building back on the property. The code, um, wait a moment. Forgive me. The code section states, quote, "A non-conforming use may be extended through any part of a building which were manifestly arranged or designed for such use at the time of adoption or amendment of this ordinance, but no such use shall be extended to occupy any land outside such building." So when she came to put a storage building back on the property, a non-conforming use, she can use any part of the existing house for that, a single-family use. She can't expand the house, nor can she add any accessory structures, because that would be an expansion of a non-conforming use, which is residence. So I denied her request to put a storage shed back on the property because it would be an expansion of a non-conforming use. So per the provisions of Section 1001(c), an appeal to my decision is brought before the Board of Zoning Appeals. So her request is to allow the expansion of a non-conforming use for a single-family residence in a C2 zoning district to put a storage shed on their property. And I believe she has a representative here tonight.
Okay. Are we in a public hearing? Or, are we, do we take, we need to get a motion passed first to just?
Wait a moment, please. So yes, so it is a public hearing. I would think it would be appropriate to hear from the applicant.
Okay, we'll, we'll go into a public hearing. Let's, let's hear from the applicant, your name and address, please?
Sure, my name is Sarah Kenyon. I live at 109 Deerfield Road in Normandy. I work for the construction company that is doing the renovation on the property, and Ms. Wendell could not be here, she had to drive her daughter out to California, so she asked me to come in her stead. Basically, I mean, we're kind of in agreement of everything that Ms. Mary said, however, the, you know, we were given the rights, she was given the rights to renovate that home and stay and live in it. And she's asking to just put a 12-by-16, locally bought wooden storage shed. It's not a permanent structure, so it won't have, you know, foundation in the back left corner up next to the fence, and just used to store lawnmower, you know, yard equipment and such, because there is no garage or any place to store that type of equipment, so it would just be kind of sitting outside. She thought a shed would be, you know, better for that type of thing. I'm not sure if she was aware or not that, you know, when removing the other dilapidated sheds, that she would not be able to put another one back up, that I don't know. But she would like to put it in the back left corner up against existing fence. She has spoken to the neighbor there, and they don't have an issue with it, I know it's a city issue, but, and really, that's kind of it.
I guess, can I get a motion?
No. Just a motion to deny.
A motion to deny, or a motion to? Motion to not deny the appeal would be?
Motion to deny the appeal, based on the fact of.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second motion to deny.
Okay, we have a motion, first and a second. Any comments?
Quick question for, on this, it does say that, I want to clarify, the current property owner, it says at that time was told, is this prior to purchasing that property, that she was told that it was non-conforming?
That I'm not aware of, but she was certainly made aware that it was non-conforming after she purchased the property, because I know that, and I have recorded this in, in the files at the office, that when Ms. Moody was the acting director, she talked extensively about possible commercial uses the applicant could do on that property under the C2 zoning district.
I've looked at some of those.
Yeah, so there was discussion about doing some commercial uses in the, in the existing single-family structure, that ultimately, the applicant decided not to pursue any commercial uses and wanted to reside in the residence. She was allowed to reestablish the non-conforming use and then full permit supporting it.
The properties around this, maybe in here, are they commercial or residential?
They are primarily commercial. There's a, a very large warehouse across the street on Deckard. There is a landscaping slash warehousing business behind her that fronts, I believe, Anderson. So really, this area, I would, in my professional opinion, say that it was historically single-family houses, but it's definitely transitioning over to industrial and commercial uses. And I think that that's part of the reason why it's in a commercial zoning district.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any other comments or questions on?
Is, is that the reason we don't, we just, is there, is there a reason why she wouldn't just apply for a rezoning? Like, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of confused at why we would allow her to even start building with a non-conforming structure to begin with.
That determination was made before I was a staff here, but it was deemed appropriate that to establish this existing house as non-conforming, and under the non-conforming structures, conditions, you can rehabilitate a non-conforming use, you can't completely, you can't enlarge it, but you can maintain it.
Is there, is there not like a, but I, I thought it had to be, if you had like a one-year gap in use or something like that, it, it was not, it was not on board?
Typically, yes, there is a one-year gap, but again, as I stated, it was determined prior to my tenure here in Tullahoma, that it was appropriate to go ahead and let her reestablish a non-conforming use of this property as a single-family residence.
So the best situation would be to have her asked to rezone the property instead of?
No, rezoning is not, rezoning is not always an an answer. In this case, her property, I can't, let me see if it's in here, her property is very, very small, and there is not a zoning.
916 square feet, nineteen forty-two, yeah.
The property's only 4,500 square feet. We don't have a zoning district that's that small.
Oh, that's the similar.
So that was an option that we looked at, to see if she wanted to go to the C3 district. You have to have at least 45, or 7,500 square feet. So her property is so small that she's not eligible to be rezoned.
Understood, thank you. It's a small house and a small lot, and she just wants a, a shed to put a lawnmower in, is summed it up, right? But we've had, we have a motion and a second to deny this appeal. Let's call.
So a vote of yes would be to deny?
A vote of yes, a, a, a yea vote would be to deny this, this appeal. So I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of denying this appeal, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Appeal denied.
You can call for no vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, call for, I thought I heard all, call for no votes?
No.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Comer. So a motion does pass six to one.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.